Oh, she's going to go until last year.
Yeah.
She walked so far.
How long?
Three months. I said, you're gonna be there when it's, there's no darn.
No.
I said, it'd be life for.
It's a life for.
She'll be back in three months.
All right.
I'd like to bear her say.
Yeah. Hello, good afternoon, good evening. I'm not sure which one you want to call it. But we welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, March the 27th, 2020. The time is 3:01 PM. The work session of the City Council, the City of Trinidad will now come to order by either person or on Zoom. We only have one item today, and it's item one, tourism tax.
Recording in progress.
And board discussion. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ruder to kind of get us started.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd certainly be happy to. So this discussion item came as a result of conversations we had at the retreat. In looking at our overall ordinance that pertains to lodging tax, there's some updates that need to happen to it. And so now is a good time to kind of look at the ordinance holistically. So you all received last week a draft ordinance that Council Williamson is sponsoring. And I wanted to highlight just some of the changes that are contemplated in the ordinance. But really, the purpose of this work session is to look at that draft as a model, get feedback from you all as to where we'd like to head and go from here. So let me just highlight the major changes that are found in the ordinance. So the first big change is it adds exemptions to the lodging tax, which are really just kind of a highlight of what already exists in state law, but it's important for us to have those in the actual ordinance.
What page is that on?
So it's gonna be, sorry, they're not numbered, but it's under section 7-42. It would be on the second page.
All right. Under exemptions?
Yeah, if you look at number 200 exceptions. So the biggest one is if the purchaser is a resident of the taxable premises for a period of at least 30 days, they wouldn't be subject to lodging tax. The next one is if the purchaser enters into or has an agreement. So they're leasing a premises for a period of at least 30 days. So they don't actually have to reside there, but if they have a contract there for at least 30 days. And then the third one is if the purchaser is basically a governmental representative, they wouldn't be subject to the lodging tax under tax exempt status. And then also, we put in a provision that talks about, it wouldn't be applicable to people who would be staying in nursing homes, that type of thing, where it's a residential care type of situation for medical treatment. They wouldn't be subject to lodging tax just because they happen to be in a care facility for a stay there.
Makes sense.
So then, and Cheryl is here, and she can certainly answer your questions. But the next one is just overall administration of the lodging tax. So the current ordinance references state law that pertains to just tax in general that we receive. But we really wanted to beef up accountability and just making sure that we have mechanisms in place to properly administer. So if you look at the bottom of the second page, or of page two, you'll see administration. And so we do have that reference to state law. But then we're also giving the finance director, through me, the opportunity to do several things. But in essence, what we're saying is there's now a required prescribed form, which we already have, that the tax would be received under. But also, we have the ability to verify basically the books of the hotels and make sure that they're reporting correctly. There's subpoena authority for records if they're not forthright provided. And it's just for us to make sure we're verifying that the tax is being remitted to us correctly.
So in that particular case.
Yeah.
What would raise a red flag that you would want to go audit their books, basically?
So the biggest red flag, and certainly Cheryl can expand on it, but is if general sales tax from the hotel seemed way out of proportion to what we were receiving in lodging tax, then we might want to go look into that and see. Now, I do want to point out for our hotel owners, all of this is confidential. So there's no public record that's created as a result of them providing us information.
Would an occasional surprise audit to anyone be good just to let them know that, you know, we're, you know, we'll pinpoint this one this, or this year, and this one this month, or whatever? Would that be something that maybe we wanted to, that we would keep them on their toes to be aware that?
That's something, yeah, under the language we're proposing in the new ordinance, that certainly is an option that could happen. And then also, just in general, preservation of records as well. So that's something that's really important that, not only on the city side, but the business side as well, that records are being maintained so they can be audited and we can make sure that everything is going well. Not really concerned about anyone in our community, but it's good to have these provisions if we need them. All right, the next major change that it contemplates is, so right now, I think we have kind of a current conundrum and issue that we talked about at the retreat. So some of this is in follow-up to those discussions. So the current ordinance says that the money can only be spent on marketing and advertising. We're collecting about $500,000 of lodging tax at this point, and we're restricted to only marketing and advertising that it can be spent on. And so talking to council and hearing some of your feedback, we want to make sure that the permissive uses for lodging tax aligns with the goals of you all as the policy centers. So a couple of things. First of all, I do want to point out the current ordinance doesn't allow us to buy any capital. And so we're really limited to just marketing and advertising. There's not really clear definitions as to what that is. So we want to look at maybe, you know, kind of beefing this section up. But just for proposal to you all, and certainly this is where I want you all to have a discussion, we're putting, we're suggesting percentages that would align with certain needs and priorities, all aimed at tourism and marketing the city. So the first bucket, we'll call it, is 35% of the lodging tax would continue to go to advertising, marketing, attracting conferences, conventions. We do specifically say capital expenditures, so we can meet with some of the current goals and processes that have already happened and make that permissible. 20% would go to personnel-related expenses to tourism, including but not limited, personnel for the welcome center. And if we ever wanted to get to that point, personnel for a convention and visitors bureau, where we can have people dedicated to actually attracting conferences and events to our community for business purposes. The biggest change is C, that you'll see in there, or 2C, 30% for maintenance, improvement, and development of our outdoor recreational facilities and programs. And I'm sorry, this is, if you count the pages, this would be 1, 2, 3, 4, on page 5, under section 7-46. And so we're proposing this. This is not something that we're just coming up with. This is based on research we've done in other communities and how they're expending their lodging tax and also the recommendation of our current consultant that the county has hired, THK, is recommending that we look at a portion of our lodging tax to go to fund outdoor recreation, parks, maintenance, trails. And we view those as amenities that are very important to our tourists who come to the community. The hope is, as we develop into an outdoor recreation destination, they will use some of that money, or use those facilities and expect them to be in good shape. The current Tourism Board offers a grant program, and we want to see some funding to support local fairs, festivals, we call it art and cultural events programs and facilities in the ordinance, and that's 10%. And one thing I wanted to mention on that is, right now, under the current ordinance, where it says marketing and advertising, it does get into, you know, a very limited amount, or limited purpose for what the money can be used for if we are giving it out as grants. This would expand it to not only pay for marketing and advertising, but helping to support some of those events as well, which would be at the discretion of the board, which I'll talk about in a minute, and then also the City Council. And then 5% of the money would go to, and either purpose that the council deemed fit, or to support any of those four buckets that we've already identified. So it gives you just a small amount in flexibility. So if there's a one-off thing that comes up that we really want to go for, it doesn't fall into one of those categories, we do have a little bit of money left over to do that. And then we're proposing a 2% amount of all lodger's tax collected to reimburse the general fund for expenses that we incur in administering that. And so most of that's going to be Cheryl's expenses on the finance side in administering her portions of the ordinance. Okay? And I'll just present the last one, then we can certainly open it up for discussion. So the last one, based on, again, discussions at the retreat, we're looking at an advisory board model, and the council would take over administration of the ordinance instead of the oversight board that we've had since 2001. Now, this model matches best practice in the industry. I personally did a lot of research. Some of the communities that we modeled our original lodger's tax ordinance on are, well, none of them are doing the current structure that we have. So we just want to, we definitely see the merit of having a citizen board advising on the expenses. And we want, you know, residents and certainly members of our tourism industry to be involved and represented in the process. But in this model, they would be advisory board like all of our other boards and commissions and advising you all on how best to use the money. And certainly, council can delegate whatever processes you want to them to advise you on. But right now, and this is where we would want to get some feedback from you all, we're identifying members of the Lodging Tax Advisory Board, which is still a five-member board. They're appointed in accordance with the city's charter, which does provide for Los Angeles County residents to be appointed as long as it's not a majority. And preference would be given to individuals with experience in the tourism-related industry. And that was something that's very important, if staff went through this, we identified that there may be people who, what served in the tourism industry, were in a hotel or had a tourism-based business, but they're retired, that they can still be very effective on the board. So we wanted to propose that. And I have two other points of consideration. So one thing that's not in the current draft of the ordinance that needs to be in there is this year's budget. That's already been established by the current Tourism Board. We wouldn't change that. So that will still get extended as it's shown. And right now, we have a current grant application process going on for tourism dollars like we've done in the past. And we would want to honor and make those grant applications valid and fund those requests for this year's one. So it does, this ordinance, if we adopted it sometime soon, it wouldn't change the current things that are happening with the Tourism Board for this year.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring it up or not.
Sure.
One of the things we've talked about is increasing that tax amount and taking it to a level with the people.
Yeah.
And what's going to end up happening if we, let's say, raise another 3%, which is actually on the low side.
Yeah.
And what I see there is, just like I said at the retreat, is that, I attended that meeting up in Denver a while back, and I looked at the bill at the end of my timeframe. And for two, for basically a $180 night stay, there was $18 of that was like the tourism tax or whatever that they use. So that is quite high, you know, in comparison to where we are. So what's going to end up happening is it'll pretty much, if this, if the citizen's approval of it.
Yeah.
Is going to double the amount of revenue that the Tourism Board, we as council, will have to work with. And so that distribution will pretty much grow. So we'll be able to do a lot more in talking to everyone that, when it was brought up. Hopefully, it does go through, the citizens of Trinidad probably won't see an impact themselves.
Right.
Because it'll be just from tourism dollars at places where they stay. So I think that that's something that we need to make sure that when we take it to the ballot box, that the citizens fully understand what they're voting for.
Absolutely, Mayor. I think we've done some analysis. Our current rate is 3%. It's been that way since 2001, when the original ordinance was adopted. We're lower than any other community in our region, certainly. And Tier Point, Denver's at 14%. We would never propose that. But the general rate of lodging tax is anywhere between 4.75 and 6%. So we could definitely do some analysis. And if you look at the percentages for this ordinance and what it contemplates for its use, you would just double the amount of revenue that would go into each of those buckets if that did pass.
I think that would be something to start with from our discussion, to see if we feel like we want to move forward with that, at what percentage, if between that 4.5 to 6%.
Yeah.
Get that, and then we could talk about some of this other stuff that you brought up. There's a couple of other questions that I have. Do you think that that's a good place to start?
Yeah, Mayor, I think we had a pretty good discussion at the retreat on that. And we're taking council's direction from that as bringing forth a proposal to place a ballot question in November. So we feel like we're ready to move forward on that. But if the council wants to have more conversation on increasing our lodging tax at this time, certainly that's under the scope of today's agenda.
So the proposal was what, 3%?
Yeah, yeah. I think where we, what we heard back, this feedback from the council was, take our current rate of 3% and double it to 6%.
So council, are your feelings still the same that we should go with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor.
Any questions?
But I think it's wise to start with this first, because I think if people see through this, a model of funding parks and recreation kind of activities, and they're going to understand the benefit that it brings to them, so they might be more willing to consider bumping it up. Even though it doesn't affect them directly, it still is a tax that people are sensing about. I had some other questions, but I don't know if it's time to leave.
Yeah, I agree. You know, it seems like everybody's shaking their head with the 3%. It's kind of a consensus of everybody, maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So let's go on to other questions. You said you had some questions.
Well, Mayor, if I may, I think it'll be germane to the discussion. I would like you all to address, if that's okay, the legality.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, sir. I did, I had a conversation with Councilman Williamson earlier today. And I want to just emphasize to all of you that not only do I think this is legal, but on, earlier, I sent an email to Sam Light, who was the general counsel for our insurance carrier, for SIRSA. And Mr. Light responded to me on March 3rd and said that he thinks that what we are proposing is absolutely lawful and that we would have to, of course, honor the four-year time period that is anything begun by way of popular initiative cannot be changed for a four-year time period unless it is by another popular initiative. We're way outside the four-year window. And I did send that memo to council, just so you know. I believe I sent it to you on March 10th. But anyway, you do have that memo. So it appears as if this is absolutely lawful as long as the additional 3% for the lodging tax is only done by a taper-compliant vote of the people, then we are good and we are acting lawfully.
Okay. Yes. Any questions to Les's comment? Okay. Oh, you had some questions?
Yeah, I did. So under section 742, the exceptions section, so anyone who hasn't, I noticed that it doesn't apply to premises that has at least three rooms or three other units for accommodation or lodging. So someone who has a BRB that have one unit or two units that are leaseable for overnight stays, that's not going to be subject to the tax.
And just to clarify for that provision, that is the one that speaks to clinics, hospitals, and medical facilities. So that 3-3 rule there is only germane to those facilities.
Okay, I read the or in there to mean that it was.
Yeah.
Either or.
I see.
Or if the taxable premises does not have at least three rooms or three other units.
Yeah, that, we will update that. That is.
Good catch.
Okay. And then going back up to 2A1, if the purchaser is a resident of the taxable premise for at least 30 consecutive days, does that work if they just inadvertently stayed 30 days? Or how would the lodger know? You know, if they end up staying there four weeks, and they originally came and had a two-week stay, does it then become retroactively accredited to that person? Or how does that work?
Yeah, that's a good question as well. So we will look into how we would administer that. And I'll do some benchmarking as to how other entities take care of that. But that is absolutely correct. If you stay in a hotel for, say, you book a 28-night stay, and then you decide to stay another five days, you're past that 30 days. And how would that work in terms of?
You know, that does happen quite a bit with some of these people that come into work into Trinidad, and they're here for, you know, a few months.
We can add language, perhaps. It says, the original intent is for a stay of less than 30 days, perhaps. Right? The original intent of the party, something to that effect. So if it's planned to be beyond 30, it wouldn't be subject under that. That may be a way to circumvent the obligations of the tax for people who are doing that. But something to that effect, I think we can add that, which I'm saying.
The word continuous comes into mind for some reason or another, if they live there continuously for, beyond the 30 days. And I think you could adjust the rest of that, right?
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll work on that.
And then I noticed the administrative burden on Ms. Navarette is a lot. I don't know what she does now with regard to overseeing these tax returns, but I was glad that you put in, you proposed the 2% for admin costs, because she may need staff to do this. And I don't, she's already easier than one on a paper hand, so I don't want to.
Cheryl, do you have any concerns about that?
I don't believe so. Actually, my assistant handles lodging tax, so with my supervision, so it wouldn't be much more of a burden.
Good, okay. Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
All right, and then, the only other thing I think that would be worth talking about is how council would interact with this advisory board. Are they going to be required to make formal proposals to us? Or just say, hey, we'd like you to focus on this. We think this would be an effective way to get the word out about Trinidad. Are they going to be interacting with advertising or marketing firms that you might hire? How, that, I think, needs some fleshing out.
Sure. Yeah, and the way, you know, that's really kind of the feedback we're looking from you all, what you would like to see. I think right now, if we were to hire a marketing and advertising firm, our current Tourism Board would certainly have opportunities to interact with them and set direction. But staff, Marty, is also administering a lot of that, processing payments and that type of thing. So we can structure that however the council would like. But they're an at-will advisory board to you all. And so you can establish that relationship and what you would like to see them do on your behalf as we move forward.
Let's take that one item there and see if council has anything that they would like to add to that or took away, if they're.
Concerning the interaction?
Yes.
My question on that is, would the method and requirements of the interaction necessarily be, need to be enshrined in the ordinance, or can that be ad hoc?
No, absolutely not. So we really don't have those mechanisms for any of our water commissions. So that can certainly be something that is worked out, given you and the board.
If I may, Mayor. I think it's important as we develop the, hopefully, as we develop RFP for a strategic plan for the city, and we move towards, you know, hypothetically, a more tourism-based economy. And it's a great idea to include, you know, if we could make ourselves as a destination area for, I don't know what you'd call them, like boutique seminars or, you know, smaller-type seminars. But if we can align all of those efforts to the strategic plan that we get, that's going to serve Trinidad and the citizens and the businesses of Trinidad the best. So I think it's just important that all of that pull in the same direction. So we can establish that, you know, get the strategic plan, get this in place, and then move down the road. And the way that the spending is set up, it will allow us to more closely align the strategic plan. I think I just successfully talked in the circle.
You know, one of the things that I see being the liaison to the Tourism Board is we're going to have to allow the Tourism Board to, like, whenever they get a proposal from a marketing firm, or let's say, one of the magazines that they advertise in. I think they're going to have to do a lot of that vetting, like they're doing now. I think that's going to be important and see what their recommendations are. And then they bring it forward to us to see if that aligns with what we feel is necessary. And now we have kind of cleared, I think, a lot of the minutia out of it. Because otherwise, it could get into where we're doing basically the same thing they're trying to do, and I don't think that's good either.
Yeah, and I just want to point out, under section 7-47, I'll just read what it says in the role of the, we're calling the Lodging Tax Advisory Board now, it's here because of the different buckets. But there is established a Lodging Tax Advisory Board consisting of five members who shall study, investigate, and advise the City Council as to the development and promulgation of policies for the implementation, support, and use of revenues. So it gives them, the ordinance, the enabling ordinance, gives pretty broad.
Yes, it does.
Direction for how we can establish those relationships and operations.
What else you got on your list?
Oh, and you said this year's budget expenditures will stay the same. So does that mean that just this initial grant funding round will be the same? Or are we going to just go ahead and do a status quo for this whole year? When would this come into effect?
Yeah, so we would put a provision in the ordinance that contemplates that. But after talking to Marty and Cheryl, I think the best course of action is to, you all have adopted a budget for this year. We would continue with that budget through the end of the year. And then next year's budget would certainly be contingent, developing that upon, if we get that increase in lodging tax approved by the voters in November. So we would start out, starting in 2024 would be the first new full deployment of the new budget, of the new cycle, under this new ordinance.
So would the Lodging Tax Board come into effect before then or not until then?
So if you were to adopt this ordinance in the next month or two, we would newly seat that Lodging Tax Advisory Board, and then you all can work with them on administering the current budget for this year.
Okay, but we wouldn't be changing anything about where the buckets of money go to?
Right, no.
Okay.
No.
Oh, the new, the new percentage split is not.
Right, 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 okay. Now, if you wanted to do that, we could. We can bring forth a budget amendment and have you adopt that as well, based on the current anticipated revenues for this year. We just thought adopting this new ordinance is a significant change for the city. So having a little bit of time to figure out how we're going to move forward in administering it and then honoring what the current board had proposed to you all in this year's budget was a good solution.
I personally feel like we just use what we have now. And when we bring the complete board on, at least they'll have time to get all this to sink in, to see what their obligations are, what they have to do. And that way, they'd be ready to perform next year's budget according to the new structure. Any questions?
So as far as this selection of the board goes, it says the five members shall be the residents, registered voters, residents of Los Angeles, who are actively involved in tourism-related business or industry within the city of Trinidad. Is that the sole governing criteria for?
That's the current ordinance that you're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah, the new ordinance says, members of Lodging Tax Advisory Board shall be appointed in accordance with our charter, and preference shall be given to those individuals with experience in a tourism-related industry.
Okay. Okay. With that being said, I mean, I guess, you know, any time you have people that are applying, if you have a group of people, it'd be incumbent on the people selecting the individuals to fill out, or to select the best candidates. I mean, you can't, I guess, you really can't say, be more specific than that. You need someone with these specific qualities, because you may not get that every time. I'm just wondering kind of out loud if that's specific enough, or... Because, I mean, you know, you can't ring water from a stone. So I guess you just really need to go and pick the best qualified people from the group that. that you get, right?
Well, there's one other thing that maybe we, there's two things, is that, you know, when we do the interview of the new potentials, now, we not only look at that, that they have some tourism-related background, but also do they have business experience? I think that's really important as well because if you get a good mix of people that have that, there's three things. One is if they have the background, if they also have business experience, maybe two of them have business. And also, when we interview, we look for the passion that they have for the tourism industry here and here in Trinidad. So I think it's a combination of three things that we need to look at when we interview people. And then maybe some past history, you know, we do have some people that may want to apply that have been on the board before, and they do have experience there. So I think we need to look at that as well.
Yeah, okay.
So what, it sounds like you're saying is that this new advisory board would be seated, but it would still be functioning under the old ordinance until 2024?
Well, no. So they would be seated and advising you on the current year's budget as it's been established.
Okay, but they can't make decisions that are in line with the priorities that are set in this ordinance?
Right, those decisions would come to you all.
I'm still not understanding that.
I think to clarify, what I believe council and hold was really saying, if the new selected board is seated and they make decisions within the current budget year,
Yeah.
would those decisions be able to fall under the way that's written, the new percentage split?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Well, again, I think we need to add some language into the ordinance that speaks to the operations through the end of 2023. So that way there's no ambiguity about.
I think ideally we would want to allow them that, right? I think you're saying.
I think I would. I mean, that's the point of doing this, I think.
Absolutely.
I agree with you.
Any questions on that?
Now, Ms. Ruger, on the points and the percentages and all that, on the advisory board, would they be advising us on all of the percentages?
Yes.
Or would we have the choice on, say, for instance, a 30% for improvement of maintenance, improvement and development of outdoor recreation? Is that their choice or our choice?
Ultimately, it's your choice. They're just advising you on the use of the money, and you're taking their advisement and making your decision as a council as to where you want those money spent.
And I'd like to say that I think that's why it's good for us to, and future boards or future council, to be able to find those board members that have those points that I recommend in the business component and the others so that when they do bring something forward, it's all been vetted out to the best interest of the community.
And we do have our input, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, if we want to do some recreation that's in line with the percentages, then we would have that choice. Do we bring that to the board and they would have to approve it?
No.
They're just advising you, so.
So, yeah, that's, I mean, just to clarify that with them and us, if we wanted to bring it up, then we would have the final say on.
It would be done like in a work session like.
Yeah. And then may I ask, on this, where the 20% for the personnel, do we have, are we paying personnel for that now?
Tourism, the lodging tax fund pays for a little bit, I believe Marty Hackett's position as it stands now. This just expands it so that a little bit more goes into supporting operations and it gets us staff that's dedicated to this function that's paid for out of the fund. The current funding doesn't provide for any utilization for staff resources. Now, the 20% that we would anticipate from this would not cover staff costs for, you know, Marty's position, Jeff's position at the Welcome Center. And if we hired someone to help us with attracting conventions, like a convention visitors, bureau manager, so the general fund would still supplement those staff costs to an extent. This just offsets it a little bit out of that funding.
And that's the reason, if we can raise this an additional 3%, we're looking at close to a million dollars that we may get from the tourism tax. You know, like we've talked about, we want all of our utility departments and all of our, to be able to stand alone. This will increase the revenue enough to where that, like you're saying, that the personnel would be paying out of that instead of having to cover a lot of general funds. So become more of a standalone.
And I think it's really important to keep in mind that all of these buckets are tourism-based. That's the whole point of this, is that every dollar we'd be collecting from lodging tax would go to either serve tourists directly or market and advertise the city to attract tourists to come here.
Anything else? Questions? You know, we have a couple of people here from the tourism board. Do you guys have any questions or concerns that you'd like to bring up?
I, I agree.
Would you state your name too, please?
Yeah.
State your name.
Chris, I'm on the tourism board, and I've been on the board for two, three years now. But I agree with the reorganization. I like the idea of getting more specific and moving away some of the gray areas. You're talking about additional personnel, I agree 100% that that office that actually does the implementation of our activities and our suggestions, you know, is there because it's far more than Marty can handle than also manage the council. There are a lot of opportunities for us to go out and get business here. We just don't have the personnel. The board can try, you know, I've worked with tourism in the state of Texas and Texas musical drama and Amarillo for a lot of honor I really want to admit. And the reason that I got on the board was to try to maybe, you know, some of that knowledge and experience I learned to add it. And I haven't seen anything that's proposed or changes that I would make an exception to. I, you know, the fact that you have a tourism board, that we really have a lot of power with money now, and it's, it shouldn't be getting into politics down that level, you know, that should be left to y'all. And I think the fact that, you know, we can make suggestions to you and let y'all oversee what we're doing, you know, and I would hope that they respect it. The biggest thing I like is the fact, I qualify simply because I sell jewelry at the farmer's market. That's ridiculous. That doesn't make me no tourism. I, you know, I am on the board of the theater. That doesn't make me understand tourism. I would qualify under this suggestion because I've had, you know, 45 years of tourism and marketing experience. And that's what we need is to be able to not go to bar owners, you know, not go to, you know, people that sell beer or, the hotels are closer to it because they do have to get into marketing and tourism, and they will have some of the experience. But, you know, vet them, you'll find out. The passion is extremely important. You've got to have that desire. And if you've had somebody that's worked on boards or worked in areas that, you know, you see and you see their, you know, what they've done with their, you know, their passion and their feelings about tourism and their knowledge, just sitting on the board, you gain a lot of knowledge because you talk to so many people. I think that's probably the most important change that y'all have. And I would have recommended that if y'all hadn't already done that, but.
All right, thank you, Chris. Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. And I'm not a big talker, so. State my name, right?
Of course.
Hi, my name is Camilla Campbell, and I am on the tourism board. And I think it's a wonderful board, and I do agree with what you have to say about it. It is a lot of money that we have. In 2020, we didn't spend any of that money because of COVID. So it built up. We do pay for the Welcome Center. We do pay for Jeff's wages down at the Welcome Center and some of the Marty's and the maintenance of the Welcome Center. So we built up quite a bit of money because there was no advertising going on and there was no events going on. So that money really piled up, and we looked at it, and we knew there was a lot of money going out in our pockets right now. So it is a good working board. We've had a good working board in the past, and I'm open to any suggestions that you have. I will be open to any suggestions you have. It is okay. It is a great community, and we want to keep it that way, you guys. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
Tell me. Okay. Is it up here?
For the record, Tom Murphy, it took three times for this to pass, you know, back, way back when, and people are skeptical when, you know, you put something like this out there. So if I'm understanding this, you guys want to pass it in ordinance that will, at this point, kind of take control of the tourism board? You can do that legally? Is that what you guys are saying or?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The attitude, you know, way back when this first got passed and it failed three times was, again, people were just afraid of a tax. And then having been sitting in these meetings for over 10 years, I think some of the tourism boards have done a really good job. As someone, at one point, my wife and I, Jody Flores, actually got the contract to do some of the work. And one of the things, you know, I heard mentioned, it's like, well, if we bring in a marketing firm, one of the things that you have in town are all small business people. I do video work. There's other people that do graphic work. Before you say, let's hand a half a million dollars to, you know, this big firm up in Denver Springs or whatever, look at piecing this up. And because if you give me a video job for X number of dollars and somebody else a graphic thing, you know, you can bring those pieces together. You know, it would be nice to have somebody overseeing it, like Stephen, to bring some cohesiveness to it. But I'm just wondering, lastly, if, so if you are able to pass this ordinance and you want to add to this, what if it doesn't pass? What if the new, what, then what? Is it still moving forward that you have control?
Yeah, it's still going to move forward, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may speak to you real quick. So the current ordinance, or the proposed ordinance that we're bringing forth would have the same effect whether we see a tax increase in November or not.
Okay.
It just would be a different amount of money that we're talking about.
Okay. Okay, interesting. I just, you guys are going to have a marketing job in here to get this passed on your hands.
I like what Mr. Miller said about looking for people with marketing experience, and I'd like, if we could just add that in, that, you know, people with experience in a tourism-related industry and or marketing, I think would be a good point to include.
And just to point out, under the current ordinance, what Tom's talking about, I don't know that it would even be allowed. I just kind of want to read what it says. It says that, so we've originally appointed the tourism board, the current ordinance, and then it says approving marketing entity shall be contracted with for the purpose of advertising and marketing tourism. And then the tourism board is supposed to oversee the contracted entity. So the current ordinance contracts, or contemplates, I think, what Tom's talking about, hiring one big firm to come in and manage our entire tourism efforts. The new ordinance would allow for some flexibility if that's what the council wanted to do.
I think that's good, and I think that's what Tom, so Mr. Murphy's asking is that if there are local businesses that can fill that niche, I think it just would be good for the council to, you know, let them do it, to put money back into the community. Anything else? Do you have anything else? Les, anything cut down?
I don't. I can't think of anything. It's a big discussion, and I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. The only I did want to bring up is, you know, I did get the State House report that I usually get, and just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. And there are several items that I got, and what I'll do is when I get home tonight, I will send it to you. Did you get that as well?
I believe so, Mayor.
Do you want to send this to council?
Yeah, I may not have gotten the same one, so.
This was dated, no, this is from last Tuesday.
Okay.
And what it does, it gives what they did last week and what they are looking at maybe this week to do. And there are some items in there that, one in particular is Senate Bill 23-052, municipal priority lien surviving treasures deed, which is interesting. And then there's also one of wildfire disaster construction. Also, there's also a 23006, creation of a rural opportunity office. And like I said, there's several items that are in this. But I'll do, I'll do this and do, because you don't have a computer.
That's right. Do you like how he said that?
Wow.
Smarter.
So I'll be, anyway, I'll pass that on if you've brought that to all the council.
Yeah, for sure.
That way you can look at it to see what's upcoming maybe this week.
Have you heard about, there's a controversy kind of swirling in Denver primarily that mayors, mayors are mad at the governor because of a, they're trying to have the governor enforce local zoning laws.
Yes, matter of fact, there's a big meeting on Wednesday that CML is proposing. I'm going to listen to that.
Okay.
And I know there's been a, yeah, matter of fact, I got that information through Action 22. And I send in my opposition to it as well.
If I can, I'll try to send council a copy of an article from the Denver Post and read about it.
Yeah, get that on to them because it's controversial, and I can see the reason why rural areas are so against it.
Mayor, council, just so you all know, it has to do with mandatory accessory dwelling units.
Oh.
So that's kind of a big deal, and it's really geared towards Denver and suburbs, but it has huge impacts on local, on rural areas as well. So I'll be in that meeting on Wednesday as well, and so will our development staff.
As a matter of fact, if you want, if anybody else wants to listen in on it, I think you have to register. If you want to pass it on to the rest of council, anybody who wants to participate, if you're listening in as well. Everybody here firsthand. Okay. All right, well, it is now 3:42, 2:48, and work session is concluded. All right, thank you very much.
Don't forget about the event tonight for the Trojans.
Yeah, 4:30.
4:30.
Across the street.